Could I have your attention, please? In the interest of the snow I hear is coming. We're gonna start the meeting just a little early. We're not gonna do anything that would hamper anybody having an opportunity to see what happens about the Central Elementary School. We won't address that until at least seven o'clock, okay? We'll start the meeting just a little bit early so if we can get here and get our kids back home safely. I do hear there's snow in the area, so we're gonna start the meeting just a little early. But we will give, again, anything that happens with Central Elementary School will be after the seven o'clock hour, so those folks that might want to come will have an opportunity to be here at seven o'clock or a little after, okay? Not to disenfranchise anyone on that. At this time, I'll call the February meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time, I'd like to call on Mr. Jimmy Rogers to lead us in our prayers, invocation, before we get started, and immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance. Excuse me, for our invocation.
Let us pray. Kindly grace the Holy Father as we come to you tonight. We thank you for the things that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for the children in this community, in this county. We thank you for the representation here tonight. Lord, in our lives, we have to make tough decisions sometime, and, Lord, we pray that you guide us in any decision that's made that is in the best interest for you, and it is in the best interest of children, and families, and communities. And, Lord, we pray that you guide and direct us in everything that we do with our daily walks with you. We thank you, Lord, for the many things that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for these people here tonight. Lord, we thank you for everything that you do for us. We thank you for the military, and we thank you for the freedom that we can enjoy in this country. Guide us and direct us in all that we do. We give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Board members, our next regular board meeting will be held here March the fourteenth here at the Education Center at seven o'clock. I also like to remind you that, is there any tickets still available for Montegraw? Are we sold out?
Four left.
Got about four left, so it sound like if you want to go to the Montegraw Ball, the premier event in Haywood County, you need to see Ms. Ginny Wood. It's the Haywood County Schools Foundation fundraiser Saturday, February 27th, which is coming up real soon. Under agenda adjustments, we have two items that need to be added under the Finance Committee, and Mr. Francis will bring those to the full board at that time. And we have a request from our Building and Grounds Committee to add one item, and we'll just add it right after the Finance Committee, so don't let me forget it, Walt. If I get ahead of myself, please pull me back. We'll put it between item number fifteen and sixteen. Building and Grounds has a couple items that need to come before the full board. Board members, do you have any announcements that you all would like to make? Okay. Now we have some special recognitions, and I'd like to recognize Dr. Annie and Mark Shepherd, please.
Okay, Mr. Francis, members of the board. I'm speaking for Elisa Glantz, who had other family obligations tonight. She's our CTE director, of course. But we wanted to take the time out to make a special recognition to a couple of our students, one from Pisgah, one from Tuscula, who have done an outstanding job in the metals manufacturing program, and have both been awarded for their achievement by receiving an apprenticeship program with GE Plant in Asheville. This is a huge, huge deal for these guys. It's a good job. It's a good educational opportunity. And first of all, I'm gonna have the instructor at Tuscula, Doug Cave, to come around and introduce his student.
Actually, I'm a HCC employee, but I do do the high school program, and we've worked with the high schools, with Tuscula, to get the apprenticeship started. And we've got some really, really bright young people in Haywood County. I do know that. I'm from Jackson County, but I will say, I will say we've got some really bright students in Haywood County. And this is Taylor Sherrill, and he's one of my Tuscula students, and he's the very first recipient of the apprenticeship for GE, and we're very proud of him. And one of the things that I would like to say, one last thing, is the jobs are really out there for machining right now. They're probably at their highest level they've been in many, many years. And Bunken County is looking for all the students we can give them. And so, again, congratulations, Taylor. I don't know where the other ones at, but congratulations to both of them.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Our other young man's name is Branson Baker. He's a Pisgah student, and actually, he is just trying to get in here from work. He has been at GE at work today. He went in at twelve-thirty, and he was supposed to get off just in time to get here, and he called us and said he was circling the parking lot looking for a parking place. So, anyway...
If he comes, we'll recognize him.
That's right. But big hand for Branson Baker, Pisgah High School.
Is he coming in? Let's recognize him. See, there is a benefit to being late, you get recognized twice. But you weren't late, we were early. You didn't know, we started the meeting early.
I couldn't find a parking spot.
I don't know why. We have meetings like this every month. Certificate of Appreciation, or Achievement. This certificate of achievement is awarded to Branson Barker in recognition of your outstanding achievement as a Pisgah High School CTE recipient of General Electric Apprenticeship, awarded this sixteenth day of February 2016 by Haywood County Schools. Thank you. Now I'd like to recognize Mr. Ron Moss. No? Go on. Okay. You wanna go on down to the... You wanna do Ginny Wood? Let's go ahead and do Ms. Ginny Wood before we get started on the other.
For your approval, you have the 2016-17 Haywood Early Colleges Calendar.
Entertainer motion, at this time, we approve the 2016-2017 Haywood Early College Proposed Calendar. Mr. Kirkbacher's made the motion.
Second, Mr. Rogers.
Any questions or discussions on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Next on our agenda, we have Ms. Goodman, Stephanie Goodman, from Meadowbrook Elementary School, principal.
Chairman Francis, board members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, I'd like to thank you this evening for the opportunity to speak about Meadowbrook. I stand here with almost 100% of our teachers and staff that are fully in support of transitioning back to the traditional schedule at Meadowbrook for the 2016-17 school year. We began to explore the opportunity to a traditional schedule last April. The topic has been discussed for many years with the staff and school improvement team meetings. Parents were first notified at grade-level open house meetings last July. Our first survey followed, open house, and only 23% of surveys were returned. A parent night was held in November 2015 with 18 parents in attendance. Surveys were sent home stapled in student agenda books in order to get more parental input. Ninety percent of surveys were returned, and 52% were in favor of a return to a traditional schedule. A more detailed letter highlighting our major concerns regarding the year-round schedule was sent home in January 2016. Another parent meeting was held, and 22 parents were in attendance. A third survey was sent home, also in the agenda books, and 85% were returned. The common theme among the majority of the parents not in favor of the return to the traditional schedule listed non-academic reasons for their not returning, such as family vacations and their work schedules. First and foremost, we have addressed as a staff that there is no real academic advantage to a year-round schedule. We often begin the school year without curriculum guides and updates being finalized. In the past two years, we have received critical curriculum information from the state right before our first quarter is over, so therefore, we are at a loss already in our first quarter of school. This leads to pacing guides being revised after we have started, adjusting our master's schedule and individual classroom schedules, teachers playing catch-up with the curriculum, confusion for students and parents. Often Meadowbrook teachers train for new curriculum after we have begun the school several weeks into it. We then don't start using it until later, or we then start using it before we're completely prepared. County Curriculum Council typically falls within the first weeks of Meadowbrook being back in session, and often, we don't have representation, which we would love to have. Progress reports, report cards, retention letters do not line up with set assessment dates, therefore, it is difficult to inform parents of up-to-date assessment results and their child's progress. We have found that the intercessions are not an effective strategy and challenging for students to return to school. The two-week break is really crucial for us. It falls right before the third through fifth grade EOG and the K-2 assessments. We have found that in order to have the break and them to return to school, they're just not prepared and ready to get back into the swing of things before testing. It's a critical time for loss of instruction, retention, and student engagement. We're also very concerned about the state-mandated summer school for students that fall below grade level in first, second, and third grade this year. There are students, we would love to be able to remediate them at our school, but if we stay on the year-round schedule, that's one month for us, and I don't know how it would get all done, but we would love to be able to have our children at our school because we know them best. As a principal, hiring and retaining top-notch teachers has been challenging. I have done it. We have an incredible staff. We're incredibly passionate about our children, but we know what is best for our children right now, and that is to return to a traditional schedule. Parents will be notified regarding this evening's decision in the 2016 calendar via an alert message, a parent letter, Meadowbrook website, and Meadowbrook Facebook page. We all want what's the best for our children, but we'd like the opportunity to serve them even better by going back to a traditional schedule and aligning ourselves with the rest of the county. And so, right now, at this time, I'd like to present the 2016-17 calendar for Meadowbrook, and I believe you have it.
Yes, we do. This time, we entertain a motion, we approve the calendar as presented for Meadowbrook. We have a motion from Mr. Leatherwood. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Milner. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
So, the calendar that we're approving is one that they just gave us, which means that they will be going back to a traditional schedule next year.
Yes.
I have one question. Now, what was the percentage of parents, did you say, that was wanting out of the surveys that you got back?
Yes, sir.
You said you sent surveys three different times?
Yes, the first survey, only 23% came back, and so that wasn't, we felt, a representation of what we needed.
There's only 23 come back, or 23%?
23% came back from our student population, 298 students.
Okay.
The second survey, we had 52% in favor of returning to a traditional schedule.
The second survey?
Yes, sir. And the third survey was about split. We only got about 85% of the surveys back.
And it was split, of the 85%, it was split 50/50?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all my questions.
And you also surveyed staff?
The staff, 100%. And they're not all here tonight, because we thought, of course, we'd be here last week with snow, but our staff is 100% on board with this, and to me, that is the most crucial factor in us to be taking this forward. That's the very first thing we did. We addressed it as a staff. We started talking about what we needed to do, how we need to do it, how we need to inform parents, but I don't know how many I have behind me. Quite a bit. So, but we are all 100% on board with this.
I do have a question. Does this calendar match up with what I proposed?
Absolutely.
That's the question.
Should match up with the traditional.
The traditional, yes.
Any other questions before we vote? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. You wanna go ahead and do policies? We got time? And Mr. Shepherd, we'll go ahead and do policies, we got the time to do it, if you wanna do the policies, and then we'll roll back to the talking. We'll do our open session. Thank you, Ron Moss. Okay, Mr. Shepherd?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, you have several policies that would just be for a first read. You have number 1,000, number 42, 36, which is also 61, 26, 50, 30, and then the first half of the 6,000 series.
As per board policy, these policies that are listed will be tabled until the next board meeting for public input. Okay?
Okay, and then that second section of three are the ones that are for approval for tonight.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that the policies listed be approved as presented. Mr. Rogers has made, Mr. Jimmy Rogers has made the motion. I hear a second to the, Mr. Jim Francis has made a second to the motion to approve the policies as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And you wanna go on and do your... Tell what to do. We're after seven now. Let's roll back up and do our open session. Ms. King, have you had anyone additional asked to sign up to address the board? The public input section of our regular board meeting is different than what was held at the Central Elementary School, and I just wanted to let you know the differences of how this works this evening. The time reserved for public comment, as listed in our policy, is up to 30 minutes, and I don't think we'll have a problem, because we limit each speaker to three minutes, and we've had eight people to sign up to speak to the board, so my math's right, we should have a little bit of extra time. But it will be strictly adhered to to the three-minute time limit. When you get to three minutes, I'll hear the alarm or the buzzer, and then we'll close off the discussion on that point, and then the next speaker will come forward. That's clearly stated in our policy. Nothing different than we've done at all of our other board meetings. Brooke, would you roll it back down to my little comments I make? Thank you. Now is a time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. The first person as requested to address the board is Josh Pratt. Is Josh here?
Yes, sir, Mr. Pratt. Central Elementary is not facing closure because it's a failed school. It's not. It's successful by every measure of the term, perhaps most importantly, because of the love for our school that our teachers, staff, and community of Central Elementary have inspired. If Central didn't inspire this love from its community, we wouldn't be here fighting for it. We need to look to Raleigh, and our local representative is in Raleigh. No matter how you frame the numbers, North Carolina is near the bottom of the country's rankings in education spending in every category. This is unacceptable in one of the nation's fastest-growing economies. Put our money where it's supposed to go. As a representative president, you've accepted no blame for this and repeatedly laid the blame on the local school board. You've also said you look forward to working with our school board to find a solution to our situation, but to my knowledge, you have not worked with our school board at all to find solutions. You've only continued to blame them, and are you gonna blame the next school board who finds themselves in the same situation? Another negative trend that's been embraced by Presnell in Raleigh is sending public school money to charter and private schools. Private interests hiding behind the catchphrase of "choice" or siphoning money away from our schools for profit charter and private schools. This has had a profound effect on our budget and across the country. Of Haywood County's two-and-a-half million dollar budget to shortfall, nearly a million and a half of that is due to charter schools. Majority of that million and a half dollars is due to one charter school, Shining Rock Classical Academy. I don't believe most, if any, of the parents who've chosen to send their children to Shining Rock understood that this would be the impact of their school coming here, but it is. You can rest assured that the core founders and money behind Shining Rock knew full well and didn't care. Shining Rock Classical Academy is not a worthy substitute for Central Elementary. Central Elementary shouldn't have to close so that Shining Rock can exist. Oregon State Supreme Court recently handed down a decision outlawing charter schools in their state after finding they weren't truly public, they don't serve the interests of the whole community. Central has the most ethnic diversity and lowest per household income of any Haywood County school. Recent Duke University study found charter schools are less diverse than public schools. Charter schools aren't required to offer bus services, school lunches, licensed teachers, or elected school boards. This is you getting less for your public education dollar. Your school board members don't even have to reside in North Carolina. Think about that. Worst of all, there's no accountability for the public funds they receive. This has led to a system of fraud and theft throughout the country. Investment is poured in from Wall Street and big investors into the charter school system. This money isn't coming from people or institutions with backgrounds in education or history of caring about the public good. It is, in short, the latest scam to steal taxpayer money. The door's also been opened with effort to open it even wider of sending our public education money to private schools. Central Elementary is a public school that serves the whole community and is successful at doing so. We have to hold whoever gets in office next accountable. Our public officials are hired by us by popular vote. There's no other business in the world when an employee is hired by you and then starts working in the interests of someone else. We must demand our representatives support public education and not the double talk of school choice. Our community loves Central Elementary. It is a proven and successful school.
Mr. Pratt, thank you very much for your comment. The board recognizes Chris Williamson.
Thank you. I'll just start out with, I hope you all had a chance to read the email that I sent you all, and I thank you for taking the time to read that. I can't say enough how much I'm begging you guys, give us more time before you make this decision. Nobody's forcing your hand. I realize money's tight, but we need more time. Let us all, everyone in this room, let's come together, let's try to figure out a solution to this. Let's go to Raleigh. Let's talk to them. Let's see what we can get done. This is an election year. You never know what's gonna happen. Let's see what Ms. Shanavall can do for us up in Raleigh. And I'll close with this, I don't wanna make this long, but as transferring our students to other schools would cause them to not only have many disadvantages, it would be having to adjust to different teaching styles, having to adjust to different surroundings, and also having to build that trust back up with teachers and staff that they are not comfortable with. So, you look for academic reasons, why not to close a school? I realize some of them aren't, but that is part of it. You have to look at that. And I will echo Meadowbrook, who just stood before you. We know our children best, and we want to keep our students at our school.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. The board recognizes Anna Catherine Super. Did I say it right?
As a parent and school volunteer, I know that good and even great things are happening in Haywood County schools. I want them to continue and to increase. Some examples: School performances give students the experience and confidence to speak up and let their voices be heard. Art teachers help students to look at the world and to express what they see and feel. Band directors teach students to listen to one another, to watch the leader, and to play their own parts. Running coaches welcome youth of all experiences and ability levels, then train and challenge them to do their very best. Librarians and classroom teachers nurture children's love of reading. Teachers guide students in writing and expressing themselves. In smaller classes, each child can be given the individual attention that she or he needs. Students want to learn, and teachers want to teach. Groups are meeting not only all day, but also before and after school. Middle school students and teachers have been going to school an hour early each week for math games and activities. Central Elementary students, teachers, and volunteers stay for an hour after school each week to explore, discover, and investigate through hands-on science. For homework, eighth-grade advanced science students watch pre-recorded videos of their own teacher delivering lectures so that they can pause and replay as much as they choose. They can use class time with that very same teacher for classroom projects and for hands-on learning in the science lab. A first-grade class planted pumpkin seeds inside a pumpkin shell in their classroom. The seeds sprouted, the plants grew, and even formed flowers, but those flowers never formed pumpkins. Pumpkin flowers have to be pollinated in order to bear fruit, but that wasn't happening in the classroom. Likewise, in order for students to reach their full potential, they need something from outside the classroom. Visiting artists, authors, songwriters, storytellers, poets, musicians, craftspeople, park rangers, and historical reenactors have all visited my children's schools. Their classes have gone on field trips. To live performances of ballets and dramas, they've visited a national park, national forest, science museums, swimming pool, and even space camp. Many of these trips were curriculum-based, reinforcing and expanding classroom learning. In our public schools, students from the whole socioeconomic spectrum learn from dedicated professional teachers with and from one another. Children come with different interests... Children come with different interests, talents, and abilities. At their very best, public schools can prepare all of these students for the future while enriching their lives today. Please allow them to do so.
The Board recognizes Tiffany Kyle.
I have come to address the Board one last time in an attempt to save our school. I'm not into politics, and I realize there's a lot of blame being thrown around us to whom is at fault for financial issues that is leaving us to fight for our school. I am not here to lay blame. I am sure there are many parties who have played a part in getting us to where we are. There are also some who are probably being scapegoated for other mistakes. Most of all, I wonder why you need to make, some argue, sorry, most of all, I wonder why you need to make what some would argue is a knee-jerk reaction so quickly, why we can't have more time to find a solution. I want to keep this positive by reminding you that Central means so much to so many of us. Central really is a family, not just people. Most of us know each other, most of the staff can name each other's child in the school and outside of school, let alone their own class. I assure you, this is not the case in all schools. Many of us come to Central from out of district. We do this because we believe Central is worth the trouble. We keep hearing about shrinking attendance in public schools, and I cannot help but wonder, if you take this close-knit school away from us, how many of those children will end up outside of public education in search of an atmosphere that they have at Central? Many more children, how many more children will you lose? I don't just see how you solve a problem like attendance by closing what I feel is the best school in the county. I would like to talk to you about what Central means to my family. Personally, we are forever tied to Central because of our son that we lost. He went there. We built a memorial to him on the grounds because we loved his school. He loved his school as much as he loved anywhere else. We wanted to forever remind his teachers what they meant to him. We wanted to forever remind all the teachers what the difference they could make in a single child's life. His friends have all moved on, but some of them still return to his garden to reflect. They have not forgotten Matt or Central. Our family would not be the same today without the support of our Central family, who were there when we needed them most. While we realize you have to find some solutions to problems, can you really consider closing something as special as Central a solution? Please think hard before you destroy something so wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Kyle, for your comments. Next, we have Kevin Kyle. Pull the microphone down where you can be heard, please.
First, I wanted to say, well, something sort of what I said the other day, but I wanted to say, as I was growing up and I went up through this school since pre-K, well, when I was younger, I had a bit of trouble reading. I was better at math, but my teachers, between the time of now and fifth grade, have helped me so much that I'm a better reader than I am at math now. And I wanted to say, well, also, I have a lot of friends that have older siblings that went here, and they all knew my brother Matthew that passed away. Well, all of my, all of my older brother's friends, all, when they still went here before they left and went to middle school, they would always say hey to me every day and, you know, come by and say what's up and stuff. And it really, it really made me feel better. But, like I said, a few days, last week or whatever, our, our school, my school, helped me so much that my heart started healing. Now I feel a lot better between what happened. That's all.
Thank you, Kevin, for your comments. Next, the Board recognizes Mark Melrose.
There was a ship sailing into dangerous waters. Let's call it the USS CES. Years before it sailed, there were numerous warnings of icebergs in the cold waters ahead. But the nine captains crowded into the ship's bridge staring straight ahead into the darkness, and they crowded in there. They didn't alter course. They didn't ask for help. A radio calls in, comes into the bridge telling them to slow down. The captain's response is, turn the radio off. One captain asks the others, shouldn't we call to shore and ask the people to help? No, said the rest of the fearful captains. We'll decide how to steer this ship. After all, we are elected to sit up here at the wheel. If we hit something, we'll just tell them when we start sinking. Won't the people be upset if their favorite ship sinks to the bottom of the sea? Asked the one. No worries, they replied. We'll make it look like we tried to slow down. We'll pretend that we tried to change course. We'll say we couldn't ask for help because no one would listen. We got this covered. Won't the people on shore realize that this disaster could have been avoided? The one protested. Of course not, the other eight captains replied, their faces yellow in the dim light of the bridge. We will defend ourselves by pretending we really studied this problem, but there was nothing we could do but sail straight ahead into the mountains of icebergs. Not surprisingly, the USS CES hits the iceberg hard, mortally wounded. The captains fear for their own safety, pushing aside the children, the teachers, the parents, all crowded onto the deck of the listing ship, and the captains jump first into the lifeboats. Before they cut the lifeboats loose, the captains look back, their backs all bent over, unable to stand up straightly, and look back at the deck of the ship. There, they see children crying, being torn away from their friends, teachers crying, losing their children, teachers crying, losing their jobs, parents crying for their children and their ship. Some faces contorted in anger, some in confusion. In responses, the lifeboat is being lowered to the cold sea. They yell up, you, there in the band, play us a tune, maybe something like "Raindrops Keep Falling on My Head." And the rest of you, rearrange those deck chairs over there. That will give you something to do. Hey, we know the water is deep and cold, but we've got to set our priorities here, they say, as they cut their lifeboat free from the ship. As the CES sinks, its gleaming hull in perfect shape except for the gash along the side caused by the damage of the captain's policies and poor steering, all the people are tossed into the sea. Now, I've been researching and studying this issue since your January 11th bombshell. I remind you that this is a self-inflicted imaginary emergency. The school, this school board failed to follow the law. How? Number one, you began your study before you even voted to conduct a study under the school closing law since you really didn't care what the study said. You just wanted to say you play by the rules. Number two, your facility study of the CES buildings was not conducted by the type of outside professionals required by the law. Number three, you failed to take into account the diversity of CES. CES has nineteen percent minority student population enrollment, the highest of any elementary school in Haywood County.
Thank you, Mr. Melrose, for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask for additional time. I have more prepared remarks that won't take much longer.
The Board discussed this issue, and we're not going to allow it.
Well, then, I will just continue. You failed to take into account the diversity of CES. CES has nineteen percent diversity. And I also will say that the school system as a whole has a nine percent minority enrollment. CES is also at the bottom of the economic ladder, but at the top of the performance ladder.
Mr. Melrose, you're out of order.
I will say that the diversity remarks of the study, it says the minority.
Mr. Melrose, you may submit the rest of your comments in writing.
The possibility of closing out Central Elementary.
Mr. Melrose, you need to follow the rules of everyone else.
The diversity across the school district.
Law enforcement, would you please?
If you wrote that answer on a test, every teacher in the reading, well, my daughter can follow me and finish my remarks, but I would prefer to finish them myself.
That's fine, she can follow you.
If you wrote this study, every teacher at CES would fail you for the answers that you put in this study. What you're going to tell me is, I have a little bit more to say. Your projection of twenty-five to one hundred students over the next five years is unsupported by the actual statistical.
Got to follow the rules.
They'll be published, their public record. The Board recognizes Allison Melrose.
Hello, I'm here to finish what my dad couldn't say, so.
Okay.
All right. Number four, your study's projection that there will be a decrease of twenty-five to one hundred students over the next five years is unsupported by any statistical analysis and is simply unsupported conjecture. If you tried to pass this analysis off at CES, every math teacher there would fail you. You failed to address the primary issue the law regarding school closings requires you to consider, which is the welfare of the students and families. Look at your study. The word "welfare" does not even appear anywhere in your conclusions, just in a footnote where you cite the law you were supposed to follow. A, if you had turned in this paper, every teacher, every parent, every student, and every concerned citizen in Haywood County would have failed you and would have told you that the first part of taking a test is to read the directions. But the students, teachers, and parents and citizens of Haywood County, well, they're a very forgiving and understanding community. They would give you a chance to throw this study in the trash and retake the test. It is shameful that this school board has not even asked the county commissioners to consider funding CES for another year, which would cost less than one percent of the school budget. Closing CES isn't going to solve your budget issues. Panicking like this is not budgetary policy. Finally, I want to talk about priorities. Haywood County plans to spend almost $3.5 million on a brand-new animal shelter. Twelve thousand square feet of gleaming new facilities to take care of stray dogs and cats. They want to make sure that the strays have a safe place to live and meet with people that may want to adopt them. With the stroke of a pen, if this school board would only have the courage to ask, the county can delay the new animal shelter to take care of our children. I don't know about you, but as much as I love my animals, I love my sister, and I love this school system more, and so does Haywood County. Thank you.
The Board recognizes Joe Moore.
Like Mr. Melrose, I studied your report as much as I could, and this study is a crock, I got to tell you. If you really look at what the law requires, you have failed on many, many accounts. For example, like he said, you're supposed to have an outside perspective of the facilities. It, it's, you're supposed to have the welfare of the students in mind, and you don't. Let me get back to where Mr. Melrose was talking about diversity. Are you aware that under diversity, fifty-one percent of the black males in our school system are in elementary school? Of that percentage, thirteen percent are at Central Elementary. Of black females in our entire, entire school system, sixty-eight percent are in elementary school. Of those sixty-eight percent, thirty-nine percent of them are at Central. And your report says we have no effect on diversity, closing the school will not affect diversity. How do you think those kids are going to feel being further diluted into a population? Diversity does matter. You're supposed to care. The law says it. Alternative uses, you're supposed to look at alternative uses. You did not. The law requires to look at special-purpose schools, social and community purposes. This, this doesn't address it at all. Under program considerations, you didn't even mention the A-plus program or the Bridges program. What's going to happen to those? The law requires you, before closing a school, the local Board of Education should understand where students will be reassigned and what effect closing will have on program opportunity resulting from staff assignments and relocation of resources. Under the budget, the savings, there are a total of six numbers in your report that both represent the cost and the savings for Central Elementary School. Really? Six? It says nine teaching positions. Please let me know when I have thirty seconds left. It says nine teaching positions. Aren't those teachers going to be reassigned? It has like $30,000 for the cafeteria. Aren't those children going somewhere else to eat? These are not real savings. These are made-up numbers on a report, as Mark said, that was told to be done after the fact, and it looks like it. It looks like a student that procrastinated to the last minute. If you can close the school tonight on the vote based on this study, then you're breaking the law and you're doing yourself a total disservice. So instead of just talking about what's wrong, let's talk about where some of this money can come from. Average deputy sheriff's salary is under fifty-eight thousand, thank you, under $58,000. Average paramedic salary, under $57,000. Our school superintendent, $113,000, twice that, three-and-a-half times the average salary in Haywood County. She has a good salary, and this school board, right here, every year, votes to give her $14,500 on top of that out of your discretionary fund, and another $8,000 to the assistant school superintendent. Put the money where it belongs, to the schools, to the kids, and not to administrators making over $100,000 a year.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I want to thank you all for attending tonight's meeting and expressing your concerns and support of Central Elementary School. At the public hearing on January 27th, we also heard your comments. Our finance committee and administrators work tirelessly to create a budget that will provide the best educational opportunities for all our children. They take this task very seriously, and in turn, our Board of Education reviews the finances on a monthly basis. This year, we studied the budget, and we knew there would come a time when our fund balance could not be utilized any longer. In twelve years, we've only used or had to enact our reduction in force policy once, one time in twelve years, and that was due to a loss of students in a class, not the budget. In 2012, 2013, our fund balance was over $5 million. In 2013, 2014, it was $4.6 million. We had to utilize roughly $400,000 of that fund balance. In 2014, 2015, we used $1.1 million, leaving a balance of $3.5 million. This current year, our fund balance will be $1.3 million because we had to use $1.9 million to maintain our staffing level and our facilities. Why have we used the fund balance? We used it very conservatively over a long period of time to keep jobs in our school system and in Haywood County. We want our students to have lower class size, no combination classes, and multiple-course offerings. Salary and benefits compose sixty-three percent of our total local budget and thirty-four percent for other costs. Do you realize we pay over $2 million a year in utility cost alone? Today, using our fund balance is no longer a possibility. We've been forced to cut $2.4 million from our budget for this upcoming year. This includes administrators, teachers, materials, supplies, cultural arts remediation money, and numerous other line items. Our county commissioners funded us at a very good rate. We received $1,982 per student and ranked 24th in the state out of 115 LEAs for local From our public meeting, it was suggested. From our public meeting, it was suggested asking our county commissioners to increase taxes. Our school system cannot levy taxes, we don't have that authority. The board has contacted the county commissioners, and even if additional funding was possible, we would need to close the school due only to decreased enrollment. We have investigated other sources of funding. We do not qualify for additional state or federal funding such as low wealth or small county supplemental. This is an election year, which means our employees could possibly receive up to a five-percent increase in pay, which they are deserving to get. However, that would cost an additional five-hundred thousand dollars of our budget. I believe our bud, our board has done a tremendous job of looking at all solutions other than closing Central Elementary School, and they simply do not exist. As a board, we care deeply for the school, our teachers, students, parents, and community, and it saddens me to have this recommendation on the floor to the vote. I'm looking at my grandson's teachers right over here. My grandson goes to Central Elementary School. I wanted to say that on January twenty-seventh, so bad. But I have a personal interest in Central Elementary School. At this time, do I have a motion to close Central Elementary School? Mr. LeWoods made the motion, do I hear second to the motion on the floor?
Second.
Second, Ms. Melrose. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Please, sir, will you hold it down, please? We have a motion on the floor and a second. Are there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, this time I would like to make some comments, please.
All right.
We are in tough times, and, uh, my personal preference, I, I really want to make sure that all opportunities have been explored, all avenues have been explored. I commend our staff for what they have done, and I, also personally, I do agree that some of the, some of the items of like the five-year, ten-year plan, some of those things do not actually have to be done. I mean, it's a recommendation, and it's on the life expectancy of a lot of, a lot of items like your cafeteria, furniture, fixtures, things like that. I, I really wish this could be extended for a month, my personal preference that, like you say, make sure there is not funding available to help keep this school for another fiscal year after the elections. If the legislature does not offer any more money, funding for public school education, yes, that school would have to be closed. But I would really love to see us have this postponed for at least one month to see if there is an opportunity enough to have money funded. Do a year, 'cause the money's not there, I mean, it's not there.
Any other questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
I'm in agreement with Jimmy when it comes to the month. I mean, well, everything, everything, everybody has come to us, and so far, everything I've heard is, "Give us more time," I've even heard a month. So, I personally would like to see another month. I know their motion, and they're already second on the floor.
Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? This is discussion here with the board. Any other questions or comments?
I've got a question.
Okay.
If, um, first, let me make a statement first, and then I'll ask a question. Most assuredly, I can say that none of us want to be in this position. However, we have been elected to make the best decisions we can for the whole of the school system. With that said, if, I, I want everybody in the room to be able to understand the place that we're in. If we were to wait a year, then if something don't change, we're a year further down the road, now we're, the budget cuts have fallen even deeper, and rather than look at being able to, uh, move people around in the system and not lose any jobs, but handle it through attrition, if we keep kicking the can down the road, before long, we're gonna be so far in the hole, we're gonna start riftin' people, and that's not the, not what we want to do. So, my question is, if you, I don't know if you can answer, it may be an unanswerable question, but if we, if we were to move it down the road, even a month, what's the overall impact? I mean, is, is there anything that can make a difference? Or are we gonna be right back in this same place, and our motions have gotten even higher, and we're, we're closer to the beginning of a new school year?
Well, the question is about if you delay it. My, my comment would be is if, if we vote tonight to close the school, okay? We find out that we've got this pot of money coming in, we can vote next month to open it right back up. I don't see that there's any reason why you couldn't do that. And to me, if, if we have time, if we have time to, uh, look at it over a period of time, and things do change, we can always change and open it back up. We could open it up in July, June? I mean, there's a possibility you could move it back open, uh, if the funding became available, is the way I look at it. And therefore, therefore, that would be the only way I could answer that question, Mr. Rogers. Any other questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote. Do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to say something, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I want to start by saying, I don't want to close Central Elementary School. I don't want any school in this county closed. And I really appreciate all your comments, especially the other night. I appreciate the children talking to us, and parents, and community. And I understand the connection you have with your school. I feel the same thing, the same way about that with, with Gilasca Elementary. My, they closed Eastland when my, my sister started there, and, and I went there, and my, my dad was the first PTA president. And I, I get the, the connection, my daughter's going to Gilasca, so I understand the connection you have with your school. And I understand the bond that the school and the community and the children and the teachers have together. I, I get that. And I have lots of personal reasons that I don't want to close the school. My church, you know, Spawther Central, I have lots of my, you know, church family and friends that go there and teach at Central. You know, it's, and, you know, with my children being at, at Gilasca, this will have a personal impact on me as well, because Gilasca is one of the schools that's gonna be impacted by this decision. But unfortunately, you know, this, this decision is bigger than what my personal wants are. You know, our, our budgets have been cut since two thousand and eight, and the, our administration and, uh, prior boards that had the forethought to, to build this fund balance has kept us afloat until this point in time. But right now, the fund ma, balance is gone, and I want to make sure that the teachers get paid and that we are able to educate our students to the best of their ability. And it's come to a point where, you know, like Mr. Rogers said, we can't push this any further down the road. We've got some, some tough decisions that we have to make. You know, every year, since I've been on this board, since I've been serving on this board, we have had, we've seen cuts, and we've gone and asked for more money, and every year, we've been told, "Use your fund balance," and that's what we've done, every year, is we've used our fund balance. And since two thousand and eight, we've lost a hundred-and-twenty-seven teaching positions in this county. And that's, that's huge, that's, that's a lot of jobs that we've lost in Haywood County. And we, as a county, we desperately need those, those jobs here. You know, the other major factor that's hurting us is the loss of our kids, or the, the student enrollment is down, and that's, that's really impacted our system. I feel like we have a great school system, our students, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, they work really hard to make it even better. They work every day to make this a great school system. But the fact is, we, we're losing students, we're losing funding, and we have to make cuts. I mean, there's just no other way we can keep from doing this. Our fund balance is all but gone, like Mr. Francis said. And I assure you that we have not taken this budget lightly. I mean, we've, we've looked at, you know, things to cut, we've looked at alternatives we can cut, we've looked at other possible funds, and there's been lots of sleepless nights by all these board members up here. We've said lots of prayers over this budget. And I know this is the toughest decision I've had to make since I was on the board, and I'm sure it's the toughest decision that any of these board members have had to make. And again, I personally do not want to close Central. But we can't postpone it all down the road, because the impact to our schools could be even greater if we don't do something now. I mean, we're elected to make difficult and heart-wrenching decisions, even though we don't want to make them, and we're at a point where we've got to make the decisions.
Any other question or discussion before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add, this board knows this, this is a public explanation. Depending on what your vote is, and I, if it's in the affirmative, it still has to be approved by the Department of Public Instruction, so...
Mr. Smathers has just informed us that the protocol is, is that we would actually report to, vote tonight to the Department of Public Instruction in Raleigh for their final approval. We can't close the school, the Department of Public Instruction can, uh, so it goes to Raleigh. And I'm sure that... Sir? At the Department of Public Instruction, yes, sir. And again, like I said earlier, whenever it got heated, if something comes along and I win the lottery, I'll fund it myself. Be glad to. But the thing is, is the, the money's not there, and, anyway. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Yes. We can, what we'll do, Ms. Breeze, is if it's not an obvious vote, we'll ask for division of the House, and that will cause, cause that, I can make that happen, okay? Thank you. Now, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have, we have two opposed and six, did I correct? Let's call for division of the House then. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda, we have, um, the, the minutes. We're gonna take about a five-minute recess. All right, everybody ready? Call the meeting back to order, see, let's go back up here. Ronny, you gonna do yours tonight, or you gonna do it another night? Okay, all right, that's okay, all right. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the January eleventh closed in regular session minutes as well as the January twenty-seventh closed session in public hearing minutes. This time, we entertain a motion that be approved as presented. Mr. Rogers, seconded by Mr. Kirkpatrick, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We've already done that, number eleven. All right, we did the tosses, okay. Finance Committee, Mr. Jim Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that was, it's hard. Uh, the Finance Committee has met and reviewed the monthly reports, and, uh, at this time, I'd like to bring for approval the regular monthly financial reports to the board.
Okay, we have a motion from the Finance Committee, seconded by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You had two other items I think you wanted to add.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, the first item I have here in front of me is, um, to approve a drug-free community grant, and this is where we're gonna be in partnership with a, a grant that, um, the county is getting. And then, like I said, the, the motion is to approve a Haywood County school supporting the drug-free community grant and approve housing the grant in the Haywoods County schools. And this does not cost the county anything, the, the county's getting the money and, and using it, and it's not gonna cost the school system any money.
But we do get...
And we will get a little money out of that.
Yeah. More than cover the cost of the, of the housing of the person. More than cover the cost of the housing of the person at our central office. Okay, form a motion. We have a motion from the Finance Committee. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Miller, because she sits closer to me. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I apologize, I put them in right before you called.
I did too.
So, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. The other item I need to bring before the board is to begin the process of replacing the school buses, the yellow buses. We have six that are up for replacement at the twenty-year mark. And this is a request to approve the Director of Transportation and Finance Officer to complete the purchase order, loan paperwork, and any other necessary work to complete the purchase of the six new replacement buses from Carolina Thomas. These buses were replaced, six buses that the Department of Public Instruction has marked for replacement. And again, it's, you know, two hundred thousand miles or twenty years, excuse me. While we own the buses and complete the paperwork, the Department of Public Instruction will provide the funds for paying for the buses. So, this is not coming out of our funds. We're just... That is in a form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Francis to purchase some buses. Second from Mr. Rogers, Jimmy Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from the Finance Committee? Now, we have an item or two from the building and grounds, I believe.
I got one thing, Mr. Chairman. Up at Bethel Elementary and Bethel Middle School, baseball, softball fields, they're wanting to install a batting cage, which was donated by Pilsgum. They're donating the net and the poles. And the parents and the coaches are gonna install this batting cage down next to the baseball field. So, I'd like to make that in the form of a motion for the building and grounds to give permission to do that.
Okay, we have a motion from the building and grounds to approve a batting cage at Bethel Elementary School. Is that right?
That's it.
Okay. From Mr. Leatherwood in Building and Grounds, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Shandival. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next, I think we have personnel from Dr. Ann Garrett.
Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, for your information, you have eight separation from employments. You have two employee status changes, four leave of absences. For your approval, you have one employment, fifteen employee status changes, one leave of absence, seven contracted services, thirteen substitutes, and I'll stop there.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we approve those people presented so far?
I move we approve them.
Ms. Miller's made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leatherwood. Any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your approval, I'd like to take number ten under employee coach.
Okay. You are gonna ask not to vote on this because you have, this is your kinfolk.
Right.
So, Ms. Shandival's gonna recuse herself from this vote. Do I hear a motion that we approve, number ten? Is it number eleven on yours? It's Ms...
Number eleven.
Number eleven. Okay, I'm sorry, did I say ten?
No, I see.
I apologize. Anyway, it doesn't matter. But it does matter, but it's eleven, right? Okay, so... Whatever number it is, do I hear a motion that we approve it? Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Francis, second by Mr. Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
With one recuse.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, employee coaches, that leaves thirty-seven with the exception of taking number eleven out for your approval. Also, ten non-employee coaches and seventeen volunteer coach services.
Okay, now, entertain a motion that those be approved as presented. Mr. Henson's made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Shandival. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any staying further needs to come before the board? If not, meeting adjourned.